And that's getting into Chicago then.
I mean west, too. I'm released to forty seven. You know what I meant. Certainly did.
All right, Wilson, Henny, we're good to go. We are recording.
We are really ready to go? Okay, now it's a little mini order. Pursuant to section seventy of Open Meetings Act. Seventy of the Open Meetings Act, I present as the McHenry County Conservation District, have determined that it is not practical or prudent to hold the public meeting of the Board of Trustees for April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one in person due to the current pandemic. Members of the public are requested to attend through video conference. Thank you, and with that, we will rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Int introductory roll call.
Trustee, uh, trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
I'm present. We're all here, so that means we can skip three, two. Brings us to four point oh, reading a conservation ethic. Let's see, Rondo, can you hear that from you? Thank you.
Uh, conservation ethic, goal number six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis or our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that emphasizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number two, to acquire and maintain other wildlife, scenic areas, and open spaces for conservation purposes and for education and recreational use.
Thank you. Christians, allegiance from you.
Uh, we pledge, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and the way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns and surrounding county, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and experience.
Thank you. Uh, I can use a motion to adopt the agenda.
Um, I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Dave. Second from Pat. Roll call.
I, uh, no, I have, you saw in the email, there was two things that you wanted to talk about, uh, in addition to, uh, the letter to the editor, and then an email that we got from, uh, up in Richmond. Can you cover that in your?
I'll do that under executive director's report, but thank you for reminding me.
Okay, thank you, Dave. We have a motion made, seconded. So roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes. Motion is carried unanimously and the agenda has been adopted. Are we moving on or are we waiting?
We are going to wait. We're going to go in right now to the county board, and let's see if we can do this here.
What can you do? No, hi, Ed.
Right, that's the county board meeting. That doesn't look, I've got the other one here. I'm gonna turn.
No. I see it. We're not muted or anything.
Switch to phone radio. Audio system, system, meeting Alpro. I don't know why this is not looking to the L. All right, well, this is not, I can see it. I'm trying, yeah, if you can get the sound on it, I. Cause I was trying it on this one, I can't even get it.
I do one. Public. Federal and state governments have stepped in to help, like, multiple stimulus bills, extending unemployment benefits and creating programs like the federal paycheck protection program and the state business interruption grant. And we too chose to act and act quickly. Within weeks of receiving nine point one million dollars in stimulus money to help people who had fallen behind on their renter utilities, we created the McHenry County Emergency Utility Rental Assistance Program. Since the program went live last month, hundreds of renters and landlords have applied for assistance to keep roofs over their heads and to keep the lights on and water flowing. However, we must not fall into the trap of focusing solely on financial stresses by constituents or under. We do not, must not, overburden tremendous tolls that the pandemic has caused the mental health of our community. McHenry County is fortunate to be served by outstanding safety, supported by dedicated social services.
Would it be inappropriate just to monitor what's going on there until?
However, COVID nineteen pandemic has managed an unprecedented improvement in services. At the same time, its hammering of budgets significantly curtails our ability to raise funds. Just look at the demand that was seen by a food pandemic alone, as people who had never required food assistance before suddenly needed help feeding their families. Our social service agencies need our support, now more than ever. The two thousand and twenty-one State of Addiction Report, released earlier this year, offers a high opening brief. If you have yet read it, I suggest that you take the time to do so. Last year, overdose deaths in McHenry County increased by fifty percent after two years of food shortages. Outdoor sales nationwide rose fivefold compared to last year. It stayed at almost double in two thousand and nineteen, despite the lockdown. These agencies are on the front lines in this fight.
This is the number seven?
Those numbers will get worse.
Say to the county?
I would give a very high percentage of our socialization last year. Despite the lockdown, and all the problems that came with it, McHenry County is holding its first new law. Thanks to the hard work of the county staff, the city of McHenry, the county's services, and the generosity of the chapel for donating space, we now have a facility to help the homeless get back on their feet and get those requiring rental home services to help their needs. Helping our businesses and people's hand in hand with helping people by getting them back to work. And again, McHenry County has been doing its part. We've been augmenting federal and state business assistance programs with initiatives of our own. As our improving metrics slowly and maturely peel back the mitigations of current crises that will withstand the spread, we created a median business relief grant to distribute funding directly to qualifying businesses in the arts, entertainment, and recreation sectors. We also agreed small business transformation plan to help small businesses in low and moderate income areas change their business models to adjust to the new realities of the pandemic. I applaud to the board that we assisted a total of forty businesses through both forms, allocated more than nine hundred thousand dollars in direct funding. This is on top of the two hundred and thirty thousand awarded last summer to fifty-two other businesses, utility, small business, social planning. Not all of our systems was financial. Discounting work and upplanting and developing the park, scholars took over the board offices and our unified development orders. So we're on every impediment we could to help our struggling businesses. We suspended our restrictions on outdoor dining and outdoor signage and allowed businesses that had paid their twenty twenty license fees or intended to do so to renew for twenty twenty-one at no cost. Similarly, our board of health recently reduced restaurant license costs by fifty percent in twenty twenty-one. It's easy, not to worry, phase four and is in sight with each new vaccination, to forget that our businesses are still facing restrictions and outdoor profitability, which in turn puts their owners, their managers, and their workers. We must continue to think outside the box to do everything we can. We've strengthened our partnerships over the past year with workforce network and McHenry County College to help our businesses, we forged new ones to the new resume McHenry County Task Force. Together, we can help our business community rebound, stronger than ever before. While we're focused on how many constituents business hurt by the pandemic, we can't afford to be solely reactivated. We also have to be proactive and focus on growing new businesses, new jobs, and new opportunities. This horrible pandemic will one day be a memory. We have to keep both eyes on the prize and light beyond it. Before COVID nineteen, the US economy was riding high. We enjoyed the lowest jobs rate in more than half a century. We were starting to take advantage of it, forward-thinking initiatives and business-friendly policies. We can now put these ideas to work, vital components toward economic recovery. Months before the pandemic struck, McHenry County come to ripen on the full interchange of Route twenty-three and I ninety, by adding fulfilling the McHenry County's decades-old vision of having our own direct access to interstate highways. It's time for us to move forward, create opportunities, and turn that interchange into a manufacturing hub, left routes to Rockford and O'Hare Airport, as well as Chicago, the hub of the entire rural American rail system. Later this year, the two-year widening of Randall Road in Brighton Hills and Ogdenwood will be completed. Proving traffic flow and capacity for retail forward has become a vital component of McHenry County's economic engine. But infrastructure is more than just roads. There's one thing that the pandemic taught us in this age of working from home, remote learning, and increased e-commerce, is that we need to have the top-notch digital infrastructure as well. Several years ago, McHenry County partnered with Woodstock School District Two Hundred, City Woodstock, McHenry County College, and the original town. To extend high-speed highway control for Route fourteen to McHenry County College to give us access to lighting faster. With COVID nineteen funding, we are set to receive by the American Rescue Plan Act, and comes from stimulus network, Western, to the governments and schools of Harvard and Lurinville to help underserved students, as well as the twenty-three ninety interchange to further incentivize its development. Speaking of living west, we will continue to partner with our friends in Boone and Lebango Counties to craft the comprehensive economic development study to help our three counties steer a course to expand our economies. The pandemic has changed a lot of the way people do things, and some of this change is going to be permanent. The change can be a good thing. It can provide us with opportunities that will make our county a better place to live for decades to come. COVID nineteen forced us to find ways to provide services our constituents rely on while keeping them and our employees safe. County administration and department heads quickly implemented a successful work-from-home program to help prevent the spread of the disease and worked tirelessly to acquire the personal protective equipment to safeguard the employees from working from home to either option. All of our departments were tested like never before, and they rose to this tremendous challenge. I'd like to give special recognition to the staffs of Valley High Nursing Home, the McHenry County Sheriff's Office, our ITV professionals, and of course, especially our Department of Health and their volunteers for their hard work and perseverance. Our county employees proved adaptable, and so does this county team. We held our meetings virtually. Members in the meeting room where we belong, members have the option to keep themselves and others safe and practice social distancing by attending remotely. A major change that came with this pandemic was the realization that the ability to communicate directly to the people is paramount. Communications are now prioritized as a primary function of county administration, encompassing traditional media, social media, email, and other forums. We've repurposed the position in administration to supervise these efforts and to coordinate them with the communications professionals in the sheriff's office, the Department of Health, and the Division of Transportation. We've also taken a new approach of holding virtual town hall meetings livestreamed on Facebook to give people the information they need on the rollout of the COVID nineteen vaccine. Not all of the change that has come has been as a result of the pandemic. For starters, we have a new way of doing things, I was telling you before. A way of collaboration, not confrontations. A way of listening to one another, and a way in which the county board chairman, vice chairwoman, and the chair people of our standing committees work together as partners to get things done. This new county board hit the ground running. Within a week of swearing in and seeing out new board members, we worked together to approve our committee memberships and fill the vacancies on our boards and commissions, none of which had been vacant for a very long time. Working together for a common goal is going to be more important in the coming years than ever before. This county board, along with staff and the N I U Center for Delta studies, is in the process of forming a new strategic plan that will help us chart a way through these uncertain times. I've been saying throughout my address that our homeowners and businesses are hurting. They're looking to us now, more than ever, to imagine new ways of delivering services and to find whatever savings we can, wherever we can, just like they have to do. In December, we partnered with the McHenry County Council of Governments to task Executive Director Shayla Deagle with implementing the recommendations of a study examining ways that local governments can cooperate and collaborate to provide joint services. The COVID crisis brought county government and other local bodies, especially other municipalities and school districts, closer than ever before. Look at how fast we've worked with our school districts to get teachers and support staff vaccinated, or how the city of McHenry and the Health Department offered to turn a long distance department store into a mass vaccination center. It is imperative that we build on these partnerships and continue the spirit of cooperation to find the best ways to deliver services economically as we can. Even though McHenry County was a leader in physical foods long before COVID nineteen, we will be taking advantage of all the state and federal help that's out there to compensate for the tremendous costs of bearing the brunt of the county's pandemic response. The McHenry County government will be receiving fifty-nine point seven million dollars over two years under the American Rescue Plan Act, signed into law last month. While some of that money will be used to make us whole, I have made it clear that the significant majority of it will be allocated back to the community to help as many people as we can in deliberate and responsible ways we can. We're looking forward to rolling out our McHenry County Rescue Plan, which will be modeled off of the federal American Rescue Plan Act. As proof of this county government's years of thoughtful and forward-thinking financial management, we will be not only financially healthy in two thousand and twenty-two, but also debt-free. Debt bears repeating, by the end of next year, McHenry County will have no debt on its books, thanks to the hard work of this county board and staff. Every generation faces its test. We as a county and as a nation have faced both wars, depressions, creative terrorist attacks, crippling natural disasters, and other tribulations. We survived those, and we came out stronger. And so shall be the case with COVID nineteen. We have met it together, we have beat it together, and we will emerge victorious together. And we will do it the way we face all of the others, working as a team, together. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the members who are next to the members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. And I consider you an interesting friend. I have a number of comments. My first statement is that I'm a constituent of McHenry County, first name is John. He wanted to give a compliment to Anita Javon C. And another staff member in the regional board of education. They insisted on getting a renewal of his teaching certificate, and the individuals showed John's exemplary customer service, and he wanted to make sure that they were recognized for the work that they did. So I wanted to do that for, well, for John. Second, I have received a letter from D Darling, and I will read that. Good morning, evening, county board. I'm writing today as a resident citizen, starting with my current contract with a sheriff's purpose as a US Marshal Service ICE. First and foremost, I would like to state that I find the fact that we have an ICE facility in our county deeply disturbing, especially since we have all witnessed the inhumane treatment and living conditions of ICE detainees being supplied. To know my own colony is turning a blind eye on this and choosing to help with the human humanity is shocking to me. Now I would like to put on my taxpaying citizen's hat as to why I would support the ICE contract. I have listened to the board meetings, and time and time again, our sheriff is going to handle the rate of income costs going toward housing-instanding ICE detainees versus regular inmates in our jail, so that the county board can determine if the ICE contract is actually possible or not. Time and time again, the sheriff has ignored the request or claimed that it's impossible to finally break it down. Currently, our jail is operating as a business in the fact that it's collecting money for each ICE detainee that has been taken in and is housing or temporarily housed until transferred to ICE. I know of not one single business that is able to provide a C M L statement to its stakeholders for yearly renewals, budget for the duration for the next year. And this is the stakeholders, our taxpayers of McHenry County. The sheriff's office knows what personnel are assigned to ICE today to stay under watch, creating the schedule with a note, the manpower hours associated specifically to ICE in them. Even if they should, even if not, if not, they should easily be able to come up with a rough number of what costs are, costs per day based on the total labor hours worked per day divided by the total number being held in our jail. They also know what supplies are ordered in the jail based on the overall inmate count, know how to take the cost of ICE and divide it out based on the number inmates contained in our jail every month. I am sure there is some form of inventory control in place that this can be easily calculated. How is it that the sheriff was able to state the answer to the ICE contract will result in a loss of five hours of prison, but cannot answer labor costs incurred for ICE detainees? How was he able to come up with that data when he was publicly stating time and time again he cannot break down those labor numbers that are ceded to ICE detainees? The ICE detention center is allowed to run since two thousand and six with zero transparency and zero reporting of property laws. I do not know how our county board members can continue with this contract with zero evidence that was ever, uh, making us money. I can tell you based on my attached spreadsheet, which I did not include for our, in my memorandum, which is composed of the sheriff's and municipal information available on monthly reports, that we're definitely losing money year over year based on the number of retained transfers and fines that are overdue. If I were a citizen, can't put together this routine, you can see why can't the sheriff of the county board make this decision whether or not to enter the contract? I cannot go back further before two thousand, sorry, January two thousand and nineteen, our sheriff did not report the average ICE count in our jails on his monthly reports. How does one find the system, maybe it should be public knowledge, as is all legislative information? I also would like to point out that I listened to the county meetings and monthly board meetings and yet here are taxpaying citizens' letters of public comment stating what a great thing the contract is for our county or how they don't care that it's been absolutely zero oversight on the taxpayers' money the past fifteen years are proof of possibility. So if those of us who are diligently paying our taxpayers in this county are not the ones demanding the ICE contract, then where is the public's vote for keeping? I implore you to do the moral, fiscal responsibility thing for our county and cancel the ICE contract, stay healthy, stay safe, D Darling. With my comments put, because of the latest information that we have nine point two percent positivity rate in the county, I hope that the chair will entertain discussions to reinstate public comment by sending the county to be read. First, uh, Chair.
I surrender, uh, board member comments.
Oh.
He's against the ICE.
Sounds like he's against a lot of things.
Yes, Kelly says I surrender member comments, so.
Based on the election, in yesterday's North West County newspaper, it was printed that county's first decision by the county's dissolution.
Federal government.
Based on the court.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Will the clerk yield the decision based on?
It's quite controversy.
Second, how much was spent for legal fees to represent a clerk's decision? Third, who is legal representation, representation of a clerk? Four, the clerk's chair and special mention, McHenry County should have the right to make their voice heard.
So we are, we are recording.
Then, Chair, I think that questions cannot be asked directly under agenda items since it's not related to the report. I will send my question through clerk. One may wonder why I have not requested the information from the clerk's office sooner, but the information from the article was only on yesterday. I hope that the clerk will provide the information not only to me, but to all the board members in the district in, uh, heart. Fourth, I've listened to Mr. Ford's presentation on resisting, um, in the last town meeting, I had some comments on the contract between the county board and the organization that he works. In his contract, it was presented to the board, there was a three-part In his contract, it was presented to the board, there is a three-part contract. One, analysis of county population. Two, as far as services to identify and prioritize criteria for a new plan for the district. And three, a creation of a map of the county board's district. It appears three parts of the contract are the same as the contract that Mr. Fortner had presented in 2011, which we paid $3,000 for the 2011 analysis. Under the 2021 contract, the organization that Mr. Fortner works for will be receiving $8,000. The increase over the 10 years from 2011 to 2021 is $5,000, or a 62.5% increase. And yet, they are the same criteria that we had asked for 10 years ago. I know that we allow the administration without board approval of a maximum of $30,000 to enter the contract. With the significant impact of such an endeavor, I would have hoped that the contract submitted would be presented to the administrative services with oversight of the important budget. It appears the lack of transparency exists, of which we endeavor to always accomplish. I, as my, and I would guess, my other board members, do not know that we will be making math work. I wonder if the administrative services, committee chairs, presentation of redistricting will be considered, or for that matter, whether my recommendations before Mr. Fortner suggests a redistricting ban, to whom he will make the presentation, to, I assume, will be the county chair. Since by Illinois statute, in a state that the chair wishes to recommend a redistricting ban, it must be done so by May 19, 2021. I find that the administrative services, we are having a discussion on having resolutions to further change the number of board members and the number of districts. Since we have the board members, number 0-201809-12-038, stating the number of members to be eighteen, and the number of members to three per district under the current six district charter, a resolution will not change the order. According to board rules, there must be a thirty-day review before a vote to change the ordinance can be done. Article three of course, section four, number 12.9, current board rule. But the chair's plan on asking the board members to waive this rule by article three, section four, 4.12 of our board rule, waiving the thirty-day review period under current board rule. Lastly, Chairman, I would like to be on the ICE committee. I said we were listening one step at one to public view of the ICE. During this time, the financial audit committee had to give a pass on the revenue costs. We had the intention of a larger, awaiting discussion related to the contract.
So I'm going to stop this here here. Maybe turn it off. I'm going to.
As I wait for the committee's vote on the ICE contract, I continue to look at my moral compass and determine what is right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, Dave, you want to read our?
I would. Resolution 21-50, proclamation, 50th anniversary of the McHenry County Conservation District, McHenry County Conservation District offices, board of trustees unanimously adopted on March 23, 2021. Proclamation. Whereas the Conservation District Act 70ILCS 410 was established by the General Assembly in 1963, and whereas, on April 6, 1971, McHenry County Conservation District was formed by a successful countywide referendum, held in conjunction with the Consolidated Election of 1971, and was formally organized in July 1971, and whereas, our founders envisioned the public agency that would preserve and protect the land and the water they loved and lived on while promoting a way of life they cherished, and establishing a place that could be shared with the wildlife around them, and whereas, today, as declared in its mission, the McHenry County Conservation District exists to preserve, restore, manage, natural areas of open spaces for their intrinsic value and for the benefit of the present and future generations, and whereas, throughout the past 50 years, McHenry County Conservation District has secured and protected more than 25,600 acres, diverse with woodlands, wetlands, prairies, creeks, rivers, that afford habitat for a wide array of native plants, biologized species, including numerous endangered and threatened species, clean and filter surface water and groundwater, and provide for clean air, and whereas, the McHenry County Conservation District has dedicated 17 sites as an Illinois nature preserves, and has helped to establish the Hackman Tech National Wildlife Refuge in southeast Wisconsin and northeastern Illinois, and whereas, the McHenry County Conservation District has partnered with many local, state, regional, and national government agencies, institutions, businesses, and non-for-profits to advance its conservation mission and vision, and whereas, throughout the history, throughout its history, McHenry County Conservation District has been awarded and nationally recognized as leader in conservation and environmental stewardship excellence for its role in ecological restoration, where plant discoveries, scientific research, innovative management strategies, wildlife reintroduction, investments in green infrastructure, green way corridors, trail connections, and thus establishing McHenry County as a treasure destination and a place to call home, and whereas, McHenry County Conservation Areas provide access to open space and public amenities in 35 locations, where residents and visitors can enjoy recreational pursuits on 106 miles of hiking trails, trails, 45 miles of regional biking trails, 25 fishing areas, six campgrounds, six canoe launches, 36 miles of horse trails, and 18 sites with multiple picnic areas and shelters, as well as a multitude of opportunities for wildlife viewing, and whereas, the McHenry County Conservation District hosts over 1 million visitors each year, including during 2020 as outdoor explorations were deemed essential during the COVID-19 pandemic, and sites were able to stay open for health and mental well-being for all residents, and whereas, the Conservation District offers diverse and inspirational, inspiring educational opportunities and spectacle events for people of all ages, cultures, and abilities to explore, just to ever learn, relax, and renew in the wide open spaces of places that matter, found throughout McHenry County from interpretive hikes, hikes, hunts, and kayak clinics, to summer camp, historic open houses, interactive exhibits, and outdoor concerts, thus creating abundant adventures for individuals and families to connect with their natural and cultural surroundings, and whereas, for five, for five decades, the Conservation District leaders, dedicated staff, and volunteers have achieved the vision set forth by our founders and fulfilling promises made to county residents to protect, preserve, enhance the properties owned by the Conservation District for all county residents to enjoy, and held in perpetuity for decades to come, and whereas, it is appropriate and fitting to celebrate and recognize the milestone achieved, the growth progress perseverance, achievements and accomplishments, and many partnerships that help bring project to life, and most importantly, the citizens and taxpayers of McHenry County who place their trust in the Conservation District to bring.
Thank you. Eric reading that with the mask on.
The taxpayers of McHenry County who place their trust in the Conservation District to bring, to bring into being the conservation dream envisioned by our founders, and now therefore, the Board of Trustees, McHenry County Conservation District, being duly authorized to hereby proclaim year 2021 as the 50th anniversary of the McHenry County Conservation District. It is with deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation that we hereby congratulate the past and present Board of Trustees, staff, volunteers, and citizens of McHenry County as we proclaim this anniversary. Furthermore, we call on all citizens of McHenry County and all those who are identified with conservation ethic to join us in observing this year with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that celebrate the McHenry County Conservation District and its momentous occasion. And witness whereof, we have here on two, subscribed their names and affixed the seal of the district this 23rd day of March 2021.
Don't eat the potato chip for free, Reed.
Words of wisdom.
Good job, Dave.
Because I have a second.
Second.
Second from Lynn. Is there anyone that wants to make a comment? We're good for a vote?
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, the motion or the resolution is adopted unanimously. So congratulations to everyone that's worked at this district for all these years and worked on all the projects that have made us who we are today.
Yep.
So congratulations to staff also.
Thank you, everyone.
So who's our longest staff member at this point in time?
Well, I think Ed probably gets the.
Ed, are you, are you the longest-term person here out of the 50 years now?
I'm here 35 years.
Good for you.
So anybody longer still here, or are you number one now?
I think, I think I'm here the longest. I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so what was your first job here?
My first job was as a ranger for Region One.
All right, well, congratulations on everything that's been accomplished through your time here and for everyone else. It's a good reflection on all the work that everyone's put into it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to trustees' report.
I've only got a couple of things. I was thrilled to see that we received $46,500, $658,000 for COVID expenses, if you remember that reimbursement we did. And then Ricky, I've just been able to congratulate staff on partnership, working with everyone together, or example, several examples, but one is like size of fleets and planning, doing the project, you all working together, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else to report? Okay, I take it Kelly is not available right now for the liaison report. Okay, that brings in my report. I've only had, I've had a couple of people, I've had two people call about the opening as a trustee, and I've had one person call about some, a burn that we did that they thought got a little too close to them, but they seemed fine by the time the conversation was over. So that was okay. And so we have people that are interested in coming on the board and had good conversations there. So that's pretty much all I have. A couple of comments. Stephanie, do we have anybody out there?
We do, but I don't see anybody with any comments.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Oh, I think I'll do that one.
Okay. I'd get a drink of water first. Don't eat the potato chip.
They'll probably cut in once we get there. I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, I have moved that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the following. 12.1, approval of minutes for previous meetings. 12.1A is March 11, 2021 special call. 12.1B is March 18, 2021 committee of the whole. 12.1C, March 23, 2021, regular monthly. 12.1D, February 23, 2021, regular meeting executive session. 12.2, acceptance of the treasures report. 12.2A.
Kelly's on.
Kelly, right on.
She's doing her member comment, but okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Accept, 12.2A, acceptance of the treasures report for March 31, 2021 is presented. 12.2B, acceptance of the investment report for 2021 fiscal year 2021 quarter four. 12.3, resolution number 2125, a resolution awarding a contract to Red Buffalo Nursery of Richmond, Illinois, three herbicide labor projects at 45.85 per hour at Alden Gap, Harts Road Bend, and Goose Lake Eskers for a cost not to exceed $23,000. Awarding a contract to Baxter and Woodman Natural Resources, LLC, Crystal Lake, two herbicide land labor projects at 49.20 cents per hour at Kishawaki Corridor, and 48.85 per hour at Coral Woods for a cost not to exceed $25,000. And awarding a contract to Applied Ecological Services, Inc. of West Dundee, Illinois, two herbicide labor projects at 49.00 per hour at Lake Elizabeth and School Springs for a cost not to exceed $40,000. 12.4, resolution number 2021-26, a resolution awarding a contract to Jim Potts Motor Group of Woodstock, Illinois, the lowest responsible responsive bidder for the purchase of two new 6x6 side-by-side ATVs for natural areas management work throughout the county at a total cost not to exceed $36,400. 12.5, resolution number 21-27, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with Piloto Lotto Construction, Inc. of Crest Hill, Illinois, the lowest responsible responsive bidder for the re-roofing of the Brookdale Office Complex Building for a cost not to exceed $103,880. 12.6, resolution number 21-28, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a towing agreement with Parrot Towing of Crystal Lake, Illinois, one of the approved vendors on the Henry County Sheriff's Office towing list, and any other vendor on the approved towing list as needed. 12.7, ordinance number 21-1002, an ordinance adopting the 2021 hunting administrative directive for deer waterfowl and youth spraying turkey. 12.8, resolution number 21-29, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute an intergovernmental agreement for mutual aid between the McHenry County Conservation District and the Village of Johnsburg. 12.9, resolution number 21-30, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022 legislative program. 12.10, resolution number 21-31, a resolution accepting the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Illinois Bicycle Grant, and the amount of $50,000 for the Prairie Trail Ringwood Renovation Project, and to authorize the executive director to execute necessary documents. 12.11, authorization to prepare specifications and let bits for stormwater repairs to the Prairie Trail between Ringwood Road and Bernard Mill Road in Ringwood, Illinois. 12.12, resolution number 2132, a resolution authorizing the execution of the necessary documents to submit in the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Local Government Snowmobile Grant to provide the McHenry County Snowmobile Association with $40,000 to maintain snowmobile trails throughout the county for a three-year period, 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. That was record time.
I'll second.
And Dave will second. Roll call.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Moves us on to, are we good to go still?
Still good, no message.
New and unfinished board business. Approval of bills payable for the month. Anyway, the internal audit, Dave?
I do have some, as a matter of fact. Vendor H. 6893, Ralph Heim, Inc., for $28.47. Vendor L. 8809, Lift Tech, Inc., for $1,000. And should I, okay. Vendor Q. 8474, Quench USA, Inc., for $258 either.
Anyone else?
I could do one, but we want to keep it to three at that spot. No, I don't care.
Go ahead.
Um, Johnson, J. 8716, Johnson Controls Fire, for $431.25.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Bill, I think you have a motion to make here under 13.1B.
I recommend that we approve the payment to conserve FFS as indicated on the submission of bills coming in port for the period ending March 31, 2021. Are they doing separately?
Yes. Is there a second?
Yes.
Linda seconds. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Staying, motion carries six, four, and one abstention. Bill, your next motion.
I move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending March 31, 2021.
So a second. Pat, anybody have any questions on any of those bills? Roll call.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. 13.2, confirmation of resolution, does somebody want to sponsor that resolution?
Sure, I'll go ahead, yes. Resolution, potential order of police unit certification petition, consideration of
A resolution, Fraternal Order of Police Unit Clarification Petition, consideration of resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-three, a resolution voluntarily recognizing the patrol sergeants as property, properly included within the existing bargaining unit with the patrol officers under the Fraternal Order of Police Collective Bargaining Agreement, and to not contest the unit clarification petition filed with the Illinois Labor Relations Board, SUC twenty-one dash oh five nine on April seven, twenty twenty-one.
I will second.
I have a second, okay. And Dave, is there any discussion? Nope. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to executive director's report.
All right, thank you for approving our legislative program. Items are moving through the committee. There are some bills that were on our list that are up for third reading, some second reading, and some have been moved back to rules or assignments, and they're not looking like they're going to get some traction at least. We are sending communication out to our federal legislators on some grant funding for trails, so I want to compliment our planning and sites and fleet team that did a really nice job of packaging up some shovel-ready projects that are within the budget that we can ask for some additional dollars to tip in. So if I get meeting scheduled, then we can get a meeting with our Congress people.
And the partnership is working.
I will be looking for trustees to join me for some of those meetings, and I appreciate that help. And then I did learn with Peter here today, they will be doing a virtual park stay down in Springfield. It will not be in person this year due to COVID. And that's all I have on the legislative update. As far as the other reports, you have that out in your packet. A lot of details, we will no longer, the COVID report that we did on the dashboard was for this past year for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, so we've now, we've done a great job this past year in stabilizing and managing, so I will take that report off, so that'll be one less report to read and one less report for staff to put together. So they will, I continue them cheering out there in TV land. As far as the strategic plan, things are tracking for the first year, and we did get a later start to that due to COVID, and depending on where the county board, oh, we're on before, so I'm going to cut away here if we can, and let's transfer back over to the county, and then I'll pick back up.
Okay.
Stephanie, can you pick us back up there, please?
They're still not there, they've got a ways to go.
Kelly just texted me, they said they were reading the proclamation for the one before us.
No, they're talking, I'm watching it right now, I'll put it on, but they're talking about ice.
There's a little bit, we are on the one before, there's just, there's a little bit of delay based on live and what's reported. Unless I put the one I've got here, but that'll be.
Can you see my screen?
No.
I'm going to stop screen reading, I'm going to do it another way here, maybe if I can do it here, let's see. I have something on my screen. Can you give me just plain?
Yeah.
There's something on our screen.
Yeah, we can see the calling board.
We hit the calling board, that's just.
This is the one before us.
May I ask a question that's not relevant to what we're listening to?
Just remember what you're for. Okay, it's all right.
So the county board chairman mentioned some sixty billion dollars coming in for the county from the federal recovery program, care program. Do we have any access to that county money, or is there a special carve-out for districts such as Conservation District in that federal as it's distributed to states?
Discussion that's been going on across the state, park districts, conservation districts, forest preserve districts, is working with their municipality or county to see if they will share in some of those resources. We were working for carve-outs for special districts, so I think, you know, if there are resources to come forward, we should meet with the county and see how they're allocating that and see if there's something that can be sent our way.
It seems like you have a dollar amount, so maybe we should get in line.
Mm-hmm. Kelly must be real.
Yes.
Yes, Kelly is real. I hear the voice, but I think I'm seeing something different.
McHenry County Conservation District was formed by a successful county-wide referendum and was formally organized in July of nineteen seventy-one. And whereas today, as declared in its mission, the McHenry County Conservation District exists to preserve, restore, and manage natural areas and open spaces for their intrinsic value and for the benefits to present in future generations. Throughout, whereas throughout fifty, past fifty years, McHenry County Conservation District has secured and protected more than twenty-five thousand six hundred acres, diverse with woodlands, wetlands, prairies, creeks, and rivers that afford habitat for a wide array of native plants and wildlife species, including numerous endangered and threatened species, clean and filter surface and groundwater and provide for clean air. And whereas the McHenry County Conservation District has dedicated seventeen sites as Illinois State Nature Preserves and has helped to establish the Hackattack National Wildlife Refuge in southeast Wisconsin and northeast Illinois. And whereas, McHenry County Conservation District hosts over one million visitors each year and provides access to open space and public amenities in thirty-five locations where residents and visitors can enjoy outdoor recreational pursuits on a hundred and six miles of hiking trails, forty-five miles of regional biking trails, twenty-five fishing areas, six campgrounds, six canoe launches, thirty-six miles of horse trails, and eighteen sites with multiple picnic areas and shelters, as well as multitude of opportunities for wildlife viewing. And whereas, the McHenry County Conservation District has partnered with many local, state, regional, and national government agencies, institutions, businesses, and not-for-profits to advance its conservation mission and vision. And whereas, throughout its history, McHenry County Conservation District has been awarded and nationally recognized as a leader in conservation and environmental stewardship excellence for its role in ecological restoration, rare plant discoveries, scientific research, innovative management strategies, wildlife reintroduction, investments in green infrastructure, greenway corridors, and trail connections. Now therefore, being proclaimed by this county board of McHenry County, Illinois, hereby authorized for the year of twenty twenty-one as the fiftieth anniversary of McHenry County Conservation District dated at Woodstock, Illinois, the twentieth day of April, twenty twenty-one. And I officially want to congratulate the Conservation District for its fifty wonderful years of conservation in McHenry County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next one up will be a proclamation on random harbor should maker versus years of public service.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman, I would be honored, I think, with privilege.
If they move down, then there's, that's it, right?
But now we can't get this to stop here, so.
Okay, well, I'll give you a minute.
That was going, and that was weird. Okay, all right, well, let's get back to our regularly scheduled program here.
Okay.
You are under a strategic plan.
Right, so let me move forward, so we're not doing COVID strategic plan. So one of the things that I wanted to go over with the board here, oh, let's see here. Let me stop sharing.
We're watching Apple TV.
We're watching Apple TV, somebody turn that off, okay? All right, give me a second here, and we're going to go into switch.
We've got entertainment while we wait.
We have, we've got a lot of things, we have a lot of things going on here tonight, let me try.
It isn't working.
No.
Just see that.
Getting overloaded here.
All right, now, hold on, all right, let's see here.
Visual overload.
All right, so we need to stop. Well, it was, because it was coming through the media, it was select, you know, that's
Yeah, there's all kinds of different times.
Okay, let's see here.
I'm sure I'm glad I'm not doing what you're doing, although.
No, let me tell you, I'm here. My stage production stage here compares, ah, here, let's see.
This is a center job description.
No. Say goodness with Stephanie here, okay. All right, let's see here what everybody's seeing here, is this showing up at all on Zoom World? No, not yet, okay, hold on. Share screen.
There we go.
What's KPI? Those are our key performance indicators. Let's see here, this is, let me just stop sharing something here.
We're going to all feel better about asking about the acronym.
Yeah.
And thank you for asking.
I was kind of thinking, I was trying to make up something. It is kind of, it is kind of fun to make them up on your own.
All right, is this showing up for everyone? It looks like it's only going partially here.
Yeah.
That's because we've got the gallery view covering it. Hold on a second, let me just. Struggling here, okay. So I want to show these two, these are important, but. Okay, we're going to turn off the gallery view here. Maybe, I don't know, it was a nuisance. I'll try this here.
Ah, you got it.
All right, well, some of it, it's not perfect here, but we will, we will go with it. All right, well, it's not, it's not perfect here, but can you see, this is going to get really small.
We've got the paper copy.
Yeah.
All right, it's just, it's going to look weird out there, let me try, I'm going to just do one more thing here, I'm going to. Is that any better?
Yeah.
I'm just, it's fine.
Something really strange here, but we'll go with this, okay. So the strategic plan, we have done the key performance indicators that we agreed upon, we had one year of baseline that we started, and then looking to where we're at measuring, and then where we want to go for twenty twenty-three. So we break in this, focus down into our four pillars. We'll start off with water, we had our four goals that we were working towards, just to go through acres of restored wetlands, so what you see here is our baseline, where we started in twenty twenty, we had twenty-four hundred acres, created restored wetlands, we're now at two thousand six hundred and twenty-three acres. Our target for twenty twenty-three would be at two thousand six hundred and twenty-five, so we're doing very well, we're moving towards that goal. So again, that's our success pillar to which we're measuring. As far as increased infiltration, we are still working on measurements for this, but we were able to take a look at the total acres that have been restored, so two hundred and twenty-three acres of restored wetlands, and then a hundred and nineteen acres of grassland that was converted from cropland. And so we are still working on what those measurements for infiltration and our natural resources team is working on that, and we hope to have that back for next year.
That's a tough one, Frankie, that's a tough one.
We're having a real tough time trying to get our heads around that.
Is that like the grass strips around the fields, or what is an example of that?
Ed, do you want to give an example of our acres of grassland that were converted?
Sure. Some of it is actually done on Conservation District sites, you'll remember last year we had an issue with farmland in Coon Creek that flooded repeatedly, and we were unable to get someone to run it, so there are some stuff like that. The other thing is, part of our partnerships with Fish and Wildlife Service and Open Lands, because of the district's technical expertise and our equipment, we are able to help other entities put permanently protected land into grassland in McHenry County. So some of that acreage that you see in both columns actually is open space owned by our partners, but district staff was able to do the sowing of the seed and the tile work in order to get those restored. So it's a combination of those two things.
Thank you, Ed. As far as water quality, we know that we are already measuring these particular areas within our groundwater monitoring wells that the county does, so again, this is another determination of those, is there something else that we need to do, we're doing deeper dive box.
So are we getting, we getting results on those now?
We did get what they're studying, and so, Ed, when was the last time that they did a report out on the actual measurement from our wells?
They log, they log all the time, twenty-four seven, so you can actually log on to the county's website, and they will give you data as it happens in real time. And periodically, they issue reports on the groundwater wells, but they are continuously recording data, and those water quality parameters are the ones that those wells are studying. So what we're trying to determine is if there is an additional parameter to, that we might talk with the Illinois Geological Survey in the county to add to the measurements.
So are we seeing improvement, seeing any difference, or what we're finding out? But I guess, I like, I like the fact that we're monitoring it, or we're getting a report, but what's the report telling us?
But it's pretty complex because of all the different parameters, and it's really tied to the part of the county that you're in. I'll give you an example of one interesting phenomenon that was observed, and that's in the eastern, southeastern part of McHenry County, you're seeing cones of depression in terms of groundwater recharge, and because those are continual data loggers, they were able to tie it to people watering their grass during the hot summer months. So depending on where you're at in the county, there's different types of information that's coming out of those groundwater wells, because there are different activities going on in the county, there are different levels of chemical pollution, there are different levels of ground that is farmed versus developed, so it's really a hodgepodge of stuff.
Okay, what's, what's the water quality like on the corner of Deer Pass and Kishawaki?
I will, I will get back to you on that one.
Particularly interested in that spot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, one of the other things we're measuring was condition of water recreation areas, and so the measurement that we did for a baseline, we felt it was too early to go back and reassess that enough, not enough time had passed, so when we come back next year with all the factors, we'll have a better measure. But what we're trying to do is to, obviously with those targets, is to move more into, you know, and get out of the, you know, where we need to be here, into better areas and feel above average or satisfactory. Okay, then we move to our land, and we have four goals under this area, so when we looked at acres of land protected for twenty twenty-one to where we started, there was a growth, twenty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-seven acres, again, exceeding what our target was, but our target was just set with the potential of it growing greater than what that baseline was, but because we're not really bugging towards large dollars when acquisitions come up, so again, acres protected. Restore natural habitat, so for this year, we are at twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-four, again, the goal is twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-two by twenty twenty-three, so we're well on our way and making progress towards that. Again, the goal is 12,692 by 2023, um, so we're well on our way and making progress towards that. Uh, condition of conservation areas, again same issue here, um, we want to make sure that we don't slide downward to where we're, cannot replace and, and that we're staying in that sweet spot of above average satisfactory. And, uh, and so again, that baseline, uh, it was recent when we set up the metrics, so, uh, we'll go back and evaluate that next year. Same thing with the condition of our regional trails. So again, we don't want to be moving into areas where we're having to replace trails. We want to be able to, to keep them to that level of, of above average satisfactory or outstanding. Um, our esteem ratings, we did the survey, so again, our goal is to retain that seven out of 10. But as we see, um, in 2021, um, our awareness of essential value of our programs and participation and where we're focusing on health partnerships, um, you know, we're moving forward from where we were. So again, we're moving in the right trajectory, which is wonderful. Under our community, we have four goals. Under participation and engagement, we know COVID, um, we were far exceeding where we were pre-COVID in 2020. Um, and then in 2021, um, the numbers and looking at that, there was a drop. Um, we anticipate on a national average, there's, they're expecting about a 25% drop in participation based on COVID times, but again, greater than where we started at baseline. And then our target that we had placed out was to have about 1.3 million visitors a year. So right now we're, we're ahead of that goal and hopefully we can do better. Under program attendance, um, this is one, we know that COVID did impact this because we couldn't offer programs as we did. So where we were prior at 19,831 participants, we are down, but we are seeing, uh, an increase and as we open up, uh, we hope to get those numbers back and get back to pre-COVID times, um, as we work towards 2023.
Do you have summer camps and everything, signups open now?
Yeah, actually, uh.
That's right.
We, we do and I believe many of our camps, uh, were filled and we have some new camps that we're offering. Um, if Wendy's online, I don't know how many spaces we have left, but I know registration was going very well.
We've fifteen, 15 of the 16 are filled and we fill them with, uh, it's 20 persons per camp right now and if restrictions change, we can bring that up to 28 per camp.
What, what was our capacity before?
It would be at the 28 number per, so fifteen times eight is what we're, was what we're down member wise. Um, so we're just kind of watching that, um, the numbers there. And then we have people on the waiting list, so we'll, we'll see.
Very good.
Yeah, so again, we're, we're trending and staff has done amazing job. Again, we're seeing things through our social media programs and activities and like you saw with Earth Day, there was great attendance, almost to where we were a year ago, um, so it's great. Um, as far as social media and our traffic of engagement, very high. I think the challenge for us here on this one is maintaining interest, um, for what we have attracted, but again, we're reaching new audiences each and every day, so that's awesome. And then volunteers, a lot of growth in volunteers, so registered volunteers, we were in 2020, 2025 and then COVID, we got an increase, 439 volunteers with our numbers, so we see growth there. Um, and then as far as participation and volunteer hours, um, again, that continues to, to see positive support, uh, even during COVID. Then we were doing some baselines and preparing, uh, our staff for the future. We did a survey, so I just wanted to report on this and then we are working on the metrics. So just how many years, where is our staff and how long they've been employed by the district? So we're measuring that, um, with where they are, so our retention is good. Um, and then, um, the previous one was years in the position, years employed at the district. Um, again, that's really important, so you see a nice balance of where everyone is with that institutional knowledge to new ideas that are, are coming in, uh, to the organization. And then we were measuring positions promoted from within and, um, 49% of our staff, uh, at the time we took the survey, uh, did have another position at the district and, um, no others, 51% had that, so that's a, a nice number. Um, and then as far as what we're doing to prepare our professionals for the future, um, we did do a survey to determine where we need to focus on skills and the top three, well, really four, um, leadership, project management, technical skills and then computer software. So those are areas that, uh, both managers and individual employees, um, would like additional training to prepare them for the future. With all that data, um, then what we're doing with the survey is we will be creating a baseline of where they are at as far as in their, uh, transitioning of, of being prepared and then measure and get a baseline of where we'd like to see that number shift. We are, we're all pulling all that data together currently and then we'll be able to report back on that one as well. The other one that's still, uh, being evaluated, uh, we just accepted our, uh, we closed on the, diversity, equity and inclusion proposals, the RFP that went out, the committee is reviewing that and so once that is complete, they will then be creating targets, the numbers of the number of internal DEI projects, how many community outreach projects are provided and then how many publications we're translating into another language. And so they're gonna set some metrics for that, um, that's focused and so they're working on those pieces. Uh, but they have been doing a lot of different things as you've seen through training, through a lot of partnerships. Um, and actually Chicago Wilderness tomorrow at our meeting, we are recommending to contract with another organization that's gonna be doing some of the assessment and we'll be able to piggyback on that, which will help again, expend our dollars very, uh, across the region and that was one of the things that the board was helping us work efficiently together with other agencies and, uh, and that's one of the areas that we're looking at. Under stewardship, four areas, um, so on this, it was property tax levy and, and what we've taken, so we know where we've been with our budgeting, our goal is to be able to have 100% of taking our property tax levy. Um, in regards to revenue generation, uh, COVID did have impact on our programs and permits this year on that because of just near numbers, um, and so our goal is to, to get that back up with a 3% growth. And then same thing, leases and licenses were down, our goal would be to, to be able to pull that up to 3%. So we have our work cut out for us on that. Um, as far as percentage of personnel to operating revenue, um, again, we're at 77%. Um, the goal is to not exceed that 80%, so it's not to meet that goal, but it's to keep it under that threshold, okay? And so we're, we're monitoring that. And then, uh, non-capital is a percentage of operating revenue, um, so taking a look at that, the goal here in 2025 was to be at 100% and with the fiscal year 2021, uh, we were at 107%. So less than the year before, but, uh, and we'll continue to monitor that one. And then the one that I appreciate the board members giving me all of your point of contact, that will give us a baseline for 2020 of how we're making relationships and contacting our county, state and federal elected officials. So we will have that, uh, metric to share with everybody as we go forward. And then for, uh, our foundation, um, again, funds transferred to the district. So again, for 2021, we were up over the prior year, reaching towards that goal in 2023. They have $300,000, uh, on an annual basis that's transferred over. And then funds that they had raised or directed towards land preservation, we see an increase, uh, what occurred this past year in 2022 and then significantly what was provided that, that year before. So, um, they are assisting us with that. And then they also are monitoring their social media activity and traffic and we're seeing growth there as well. So connecting with the conservation district and sharing those platforms, um, there's more visitors and more awareness of our foundation, which will lead into more, uh, support for the district and cap. And lastly, um, technology, um, making some investments in how we're tracking. So replacement of hardware, uh, schedule, back work, backups and reliability, um, cybersecurity analysis and awareness, which we've been promoting and trying to keep those numbers up and again, having that positive fishing test response rate, again, tracking as we should. So again, I'm very pleased with the numbers, it's a lot of data there, you've got it, but that will be presented on an annual basis, but more so than getting the leads. I think it gives you a, a, a storyline.
It just helped me more than reading it.
Yeah, it doesn't kind of to go through and to see that we are actually, you know, focusing on these things that are important versus the specific, so that's all I got.
Might be like me data better listener than I'm over here.
Yep, sure.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I'm gonna, that's all I got.
Oh, I, at one point I was thrilled when I read the, uh, foundation of, uh, the fundraiser during the district's fourth quarter. Uh, they raised 116, almost 117,000 and almost 80, uh, eight, 8,950 was unrestricted. Uh, my point is, is they're making progress in fundraising, so I thought that was great.
That was the foundation?
That was the foundation.
Yep. Okay, um, did you want to go through any of those other couple items that we got this time, uh, Northwest Herald?
Oh, the article.
Yes, so two things, uh, we did, uh, Northwest Herald, we were in for our 50th anniversary, or the, um, David Herald actually, so great, um, the district's 50th. Um, the letter to the editor, uh, by Nancy Pike on historic structures, I'm sure everybody saw that, okay? And then we received a correspondence to, um, to the board and myself on a group in the Village of Richmond on their historic structure.
And they wanted us to be part, no, who was the ask?
The ask was, well, the city was, or the village was going to sell that building to a developer. Okay, and so, um, you know, that's really up to the board of where you want to, it all be.
I don't know if it's even our issue.
How to respond to that.
It's not MCCD thing?
So I think, you know, we'll have to develop and.
That's more of a historic thing, isn't it?
Yeah, they want, they want it held by the city and the city wants to get rid of it.
Right.
And that's really got nothing to do with McConnell Farm.
No. Yeah, I didn't see how like, I mean, I can see where we own part of McConnell Farm and they want to tie it all together, but like we're.
I think they call it the McConnell Foundation.
Right.
Yeah.
What they need to do is put a group together that can tie the whole thing together.
Right.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be us to be somebody else and then we could, they could help out, we could work with them, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So how would the board, would you like me to outreach to them and just touch base and see what they're doing? Or send a response on behalf of the board back?
Well, are we interested if they, if they put some kind of foundation together to, for that to tie in with McConnell Farm and buildings?
It would help us with the buildings as far as.
What we have to do, I mean, is, is there something we could say, well, we're interested in, in your cause, but we don't know how we could help you, but if there's some way we could tie in with you at a future date, that'd be something we might be interested in, but we don't know how to help you with, with your current, your current issue. If you, if you, if you got a group that's wanting to tie everything together, then, you know, let us know, but I don't think we're the ones to pull it together.
Yeah, I think the board, that was where we had, uh, not funded for the roof on McConnell. There's a follow-up conversation on priorities of where that sits and so, you know, this group, I don't know who is, uh, who's in the makeup, I guess, of who the audience is.
I would be wary of, of, of linking up our holdings or our interests. We have an interest in the buildings that we own. I don't think they have any interest in that interesting structure on the, you know, uh, where the Hafmatat had its meeting a year ago. And I don't think we want to get on the wrong side of the, um, the Village of Richmond, the municipality of Richmond. So I, I mean, I'm wary of.
Okay, I, I understand.
Expressing too much interest that they could, uh, interpret as support and therefore, you know, put pressure on us to, uh, step up to the plate in some way.
I agree with you. Well, yeah, that isn't really where I was going.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna take those farm buildings off our hands, which is, what?
No, I just, I was thinking if they, if they did put a foundation together, they were interested in putting the whole package together, somebody could be looking at that, but that's a, that's a big water thing, what they're wanting to do right now.
Yeah.
That just might be a source, if down the line, they did get a foundation together that was committed to preserving those structures, we might be able to, that would tie in with the ones that.
Down the road.
But that's down the road, so you're right, I mean, right now we can't commit to that particular structure.
Just to say, you know, that thank you, yeah, just keep us surprised of your, your efforts.
Yeah. Yes, let us know how you're doing. Hope better than us. Yep.
That's all I have, is there anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, and the only other last thing is, so tonight before you leave, I'm gonna give you the package, so before you leave, make sure I get, I'll hand those out to you, okay?
Are you gonna address the Kennedy Home letter?
I don't know what to do about that, Nancy Pike's.
Oh, the Nancy?
I mean, my discussion, my point of that was that, our, our intention is not to let that building fall in at this point in time. I think she's, she's jumping, but we're still looking at a way of, or that, that building is secure at this time, is it? John, is the Kennedy Home?
It's, it's not in good shape.
But I mean, is it, it's not deteriorating because of a roof or anything like that, is it, John?
Uh, yeah, it needs, uh, you know, it needs, uh, roof, windows, tuck pointing, things like that. Um, I, I don't think it's leaking, I don't think, you know, that's, that's going on, uh, in there, uh, but it does need some attention sometime in the next few years, yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna be coming back to you, um, hopefully next month, if not, I don't know what that is.
It sounds like it's coming from there.
Can I just turn the heater off? Yeah, I see what's down here. Alright, um, so I would say that, uh, we'll be coming back to you with a report on the historic structures, uh, both the, uh, work that's being done on the valley floor, um, because John's been busy working with the appraiser, kind of, of a plan, and then we'll also give you a report on what's being done, um, with the historical groups on review and all of that.
John, John, did you get a report from, on that Peachon Farm on the, on the group that went out there and did that survey?
They're, uh, they're writing the report now, um, they have been out on site, they did their analysis. Um, and, uh, so they're writing the report, uh, my guess is we'll have that, uh, for the, for the, for the, probably the June meeting. Um, it doesn't, it, it, I don't want to put it in May because it might rush it. Uh, and we have some, we have some big issues to talk about in Glacial Park, so, um, we'll, we'll be bringing that forward. Uh, but the work onsite is done.
Okay, thank you. Peachon, remember we have them doing a little.
Peachon, out of all that, I didn't hear no music.
Okay, sorry. One of those ringing is not just me, because I have a little bit of sinus that I was thinking.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
It's the alarm.
A little alarm.
But we've got the heat off, right?
Oh, probably because it's warmer than it's cold.
Yeah.
Well, I was feeling pretty good. Okay, uh, did that secure everything that we thought we got there?
Yes, it does.
We can move on then. Uh, let's see. Fred.
So, I'm up?
Yep, you're up.
Take it, okay. So, our last meeting was, was the, um, um, the State of Conservation in Springfield, um, with Darren from the, uh, not today, no, I don't have it signed. But, um, here we go.
We'll be freezing.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Is everything okay, should I keep going?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
They haven't called the fire department.
The sooner we get to the end, the better, it might be on this.
No report, no report, I'm sorry.
So you're having a, a little bit of, uh, one of the alarms in the boardroom here is silencing like it's too hot, so we're monitoring.
Okay, well, go ahead, we don't have a lot left.
No, yeah, so I, I won't belabor it, um, if you, if, I missed it, I guess it's been an awful month for me, but, um, so our last, uh, prep new network was, um, Illinois Conservation Update with Jack Darren, the executive director of Sierra Club. All of these meetings are on our website, so if anybody wants to go back and touch them, you can. Um, on, so the next one. I'm sorry, I passed right by it. So on Wednesday, May 12, and this is, um, and I thought I would go ahead and send you guys the link ahead of time because it is kind of a, a hassle to grab it, but on May 12, uh, it's, uh, Ed Collins will be speaking and, uh, he's always great, he's always does a wonderful job. His speech will be on the, his discussion will be on the Fourth Conservation Movement. And the, the, um, reading here is how often have we wished over the many conservation battles we have fought across the years that we could find the key to dissolving the pieces of culture we are part of that see nature only as a resource to exploit, yet we have struggled to find something deep enough transformative, transformative enough to rewrite the chapter of human experience that supports such a perspective. I believe that now, that, that has now happened, not in a way that we could have expected or chosen, but it has happened nonetheless. The world is in metamorphosis and we are discovering that the change we wish for the future. The world is in metamorphosis and we are discovering that the change we wish for in the future begins within and not without. Now we must have the courage to weather the storms that bring the gifts hidden within its winds." So a very philosophical approach to what we're going to be seeing over, over time. So please join us for that.
And May 12, you're going to send us the link?
I'll send you the link because it's just easier than having to get, grab. And you are welcome to share it with trusted people as well, if you feel like that. So that's Wednesday, May 12, and this is a 1pm program.
Thank you.
Brett?
Yeah, they did have a meeting, I didn't, I didn't record when it was, but just recently. And Pat Whaler gave a report, remember how she's trying to get the recreational liability act going? She said nothing's working, it's not working at all. So unfortunately, she stuck in the water with regard to tattling. I was, thought it was interesting that DeKalb County is going to have watershed plans on every single one of their stream rich reaches. So I thought that's pretty, pretty neat for DeKalb. And then they got on the thing about transformers on solar being a water quality hazard because it could drip down. Then they got all over, but that's, and then the defenders did get their grant for the signs in the Kish, whenever a county road where you cross a creek, they got that funded. So you'll see in the Kish, with, on a county highway, that you'll see a sign with a stream breach in the watershed. That's it.
Thank you, Chicago Wilderness.
We have an executive council meeting, our quarterly meeting is tomorrow via Zoom. I sent out the invitation. So we have the Institute of Conservation Leadership, who is known nationally for their work in conservation areas, working on our green vision. And then, as I said before, we are also approving a contract for a Jedi consultant with the Alliance that will have benefits that'll come back to the member organizations. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Pat?
Um, no report, slim, slim, we had a meeting last Wednesday, slim turnout.
Yeah, the resident ready to be in the field. Okay, okay, we got three sets of acronyms and it's all you.
I don't have any, Elizabeth, anything for?
NRPA, for their conference, they promoted, there was an opportunity to register for, you know, to register for free registration. They did announce it will be virtual. I think they will probably do a hybrid though, but that's virtual. And then the Illinois Association of Conservation and Forest Preserve Districts, there was a doodle poll that went out today. Since we're not going to Springfield to meet, we will be doing that. So we gave some May dates, so I'll send that out once that gets secured. And if anybody would like to join us for that, and that's all I have.
Foundation, what?
Um, they, we, there is no meeting this month, but I did want to remind everybody that Pedal Paddle Saddle is up and going on June 13th, it's a Sunday. So if you're interested in that, you can, if you haven't received any notices, you can get on their site and do that. Seems pretty, we're trying, we're trying to do the pedaling, so we'll see.
Cool.
Yeah.
What, when's their next meeting?
Yeah, I do. It's next, I have it on my calendar. I can't get to my calendar. Oh, yes, I can. What is today?
12th of April.
Oh, it's not today.
That's good.
May 11th.
May 11th.
It's May 11th.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Okay, when, Macog?
Their next meeting is, or their May meeting, I keep saying this every month, is Wednesday, May 26.
May 26?
Yeah, Wednesday, May 26.
It's Green Drinks, I thought it was the first Wednesday.
No, this is for Macog, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one.
No, that's right. So this is for.
That's next.
Yeah.
You're just getting to the unfastened paper.
Yeah, I know they have a lot going on, but in terms of anything that we normally do, which is the, the gatherings, that will be the next time that we get on. All right, so then Green Drinks is next. Let's see here. Okay, so last month, as you know, it was about the conservation district. This coming up on, okay, Wednesday, May 5th, from 6:00 to 7:00. Again, it's through Zoom. Melissa Custick from the Morton Arboretum. The description here is, "Chicago's regional forest is a critical asset to the needs of our, for, that needs our protection. Trees clean our air and water, reduce flooding, improve the property values, create habitat for wildlife, and provide significant social and health benefits. In short, trees improve our quality of life, but our trees need our help. The Chicago Region Tree Initiative is a partnership for coordinated action on key issues facing trees. It is the largest such initiative in the country with leading organizations and agencies from across the seven-county metropolitan region working together. CRTI is leveraging funding, knowledge, skills, and expertise to build a healthier, more diverse regional forest. Come here, what's being done and what we can do to help the trees." I actually heard a discussion from this group, from Chicago Wilderness, several months ago. And it was kind of interesting how they, just some of the things they were talking about were the added health benefits of just having trees in your parkway in front of your house. And that, you know, there were huge differences if you had none versus, you know, several, but they were actually measurable and statistically significant. So there is a true health benefit to having trees and it's.
Yeah, I attended NAPD conference topic on additives, you're absolutely right.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So that should be interesting. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, you're up next.
Okay.
Shared investment study.
Investment study, yes. So you, this is coming to a close. There was a report, and if I did not send it out, I thought I did, that was approved. And there probably will be a resolution. They're working with a marketing consulting firm at the county to help promote this out. But again, a lot of the collaborative efforts that are underway. So if I did not send it to you, I will make sure I get a copy out to all of you. So you can look, it was a great report done by CMAP and showed some ways that we can work together with other units of government.
Hey, so John, have you been out biking yet this spring?
Uh, yeah, a little bit. Been kind of cool, so, a little bit cold if you're doing that. And I'm assuming you want the MAP report?
Yeah, dude, that was the lead-in for you.
Okay. I, I, they did, they did meet. One of the neat things about this committee is that they, they try to establish goals and accomplish things. A lot of committees will just meet to meet and talk, and that's not what this group does. So it's focusing on, it's focusing on a couple of actions of trying to help get kids active and, and specifically in helping them plot out safe routes to schools in, in several different ways. There, there were lots of different examples mentioned, but that was one of the things, that kind of a goal that was, that was mentioned, so. And, you know, I'll just leave it at that, that was what it was.
Thank you, I'm glad you find that they're, that it's a group that you think is worthwhile and gets things done. That's great. And Elizabeth, visit McHenry County.
Uh, no report.
No report, okay. That brings us to public comments two. Anybody out there, Stephanie? She even Stephanie left. Okay.
I don't see anybody else.
There's a dog still.
There she is. She's still there.
Stephanie, anybody on the park door?
I can't hear, I can hear.
Well, she's down here.
She's saying no?
The cam with two, a string with two.
I don't know what she's saying, but I don't think so.
Well, I can't.
Yeah, I don't see any hands up here.
Oh, you're all right, you don't see many? Okay, I can hear her. Okay, well then, Dave, you know what to do.
Yeah, I moved to adjourn.
Chris has got the second, roll call please.
Uh, Trusty Chris?
Yes.
Trusty Cup?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Brand?
Yes.
Trusty Honey?
Yes, one was carried and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you guys, take care.
Take care.
Bye.